Ready when you are.
Okay. Welcome to the September 11th Southampton Town Planning Board Session. Gloria, can you call the role, please?
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Fittidy.
Present.
The secretaries present, Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Newt Bruteau.
Present.
Board Member Paul.
Present.
And Board Member Blazer.
Present.
We have four of us. I could just look, watch you instead of reading my notes.
A full board. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And memories for everyone in 9/11.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think Tom.
Okay, so we're going to go out of the, oh, any minutes Gloria?
Yes.
We couldn't get the permits to take that.
August 28th.
It's a revenue source that's going to come back.
Yes, August, Kristen's shaking her head, yes. August 28th, motion to accept by Kate, second by Dennis, all in favor. Nine's extension, seven in favor. So we'll close out of the regular afternoon session and go into a work session. And the first item is Mariner Housing LLC, David.
Have your seat in one second.
Okay.
We have an easel. Thank you Kristen. It only took twenty some odd years.
Go funding campaign to buy it.
It's a little bit. Used to be adjusted.
Yeah.
Claire, you want to give us a bit of an overview?
Yeah, so Mariner Housing came as a referral for secret purposes from the town board. They are coordinating secret with planning board as you're one of the approving authorities eventually. They have an application in for a change of zone. And you has adjusted and all of the jobs, the applicants come in for a work session prior to, so you can become familiar with it.
Mariner Housing, David Gilmarten, Greenberg Chord, 2317 Montauk Highway, with me is Epley.
I'm Zach Epley.
Zach?
Yep, Zach Epley.
Epley, oh, related to the former mayor?
A lot of Epleys running around.
I think it's still your dad.
I look just like him, I can't get away with hunch around here.
David?
So as Claire mentioned, this was a referral from the town board where he had make an application for a zone change from the CR 200 district to the MF 44 district. We're proposing thirty-four units of housing that would be fully 100% affordable. Property, as you look at it, is 8.85 acres in size. We're proposing eight one-bedroom units and twenty-six two-bedroom units. We're proposing onsite septic. I think one of the highlights, at least for this, is we understood it was an act for protection overlay district and we worked very hard to bring the development in to a certain area so we could reduce the lot coverage and meet the requirements of the APOD. And that's our story, you guys were.
How much is, land is not developed in this 8.8?
It's vacant, currently vacant.
No, no, I mean.
How much open space?
How much open space?
The lot coverage is about, you know, this is proposed, right? We have a long way to go through the process, but lot coverage is about 5%. Impervious surfaces about 15%, it's all on the plan. And the natural and landscaped areas is about 80% of the lot.
Is what?
Natural and landscaping, what does that mean?
Landscape and natural areas, because we'll have to landscape some areas. We haven't broken out yet what the natural landscape will remain and what will be landscape. But together, those things are 80%.
So the APOD carries, even in a change of zone, that's it? And as APOD, what would that be permitted?
Fifty percent.
Fifty?
Natural vegetation.
Okay. In that size property, I thought that was much less.
So when there's multifamily, the part in the code which we never see, because we never look for the multifamily.
Okay.
Just like commercial. If commercial, if this was a church coming here, which will be allowed in the zone, it would be 50%.
Okay, so this is more, they're preserving more, right?
Well, they're saying that there's going to be some landscaping, so they're making, they're describing everything, right? Five percent is the building coverage, twenty, fifteen percent is the impervious, would be parking lots and walkways. And then the remain, about 80% would be either manicured landscaping or.
Or natural.
The natural, but 50% would have to be natural.
Fifty percent non-disturbance, maybe that's a better term.
Because a fair amount of levy of like 30% to allow for landscaping and lawns and whatever else you need to.
Yeah, well, I think we'll be well over the 50%.
The, Anthony, can you put the site, do you have the site plan in there?
It's right.
We have the aerial.
The property's at 1100 Major's Path, which is right next to the SYS complex.
Yeah.
The site plan? Yeah.
Oh, it's not scanned in?
No, we don't have an application per se, we just have that, so.
Got it.
Right to you?
It's on the website under the change of zone.
Okay.
We did give it to the town clerk.
Rental.
The south of SYS. South of the entrance to SYS.
Oh, yeah.
It's like it's south and west. Application.
So what amenities are you including here? What amenities?
Public spaces. Yeah, I mean, we're going to have public parking, some open space. That was all kind of talked about with the town board. You know, they were, you know, when we met with the neighbors originally two years ago, it was about keeping it tighter and less disturbed. And then, you know, some of the stuff we talked about was maybe adding some benches and, you know, depending on what.
Picnic areas.
Picnic areas. So we don't share that. The other thing too is we even talked about like access to trails, maybe having a spot or two of extra parking, because I know people try to get into the trails and they park on Major's Path and it's dangerous where they park. So we talked about having some parking, maybe trying to get some access in there as well.
So if this application were to come to the planning board first, which it's not, we would look at a development of this size, we would recommend a playground of some size for the kids? Walking paths for the people, in other words, making some amen, when I said amenities, for the community?
We did have that discussion with the town board, but it's right next to SYS. So with the, with the goal of trying to reduce the footprint, we thought that they could access, you know, the people in this complex could access SYS and get those recreational opportunities which are within close walkie distance.
Is it a budding SYS?
Do you see it?
SYS.
Yeah, the two on the right. Do you envision, have you looked at the potential in the future creating maybe internal access? So like the kids can.
Yes, we talked about that. We, you know, that was a discussion, walking along Major's Path, if you've been on there, is it the safest thing? So getting from the, from the property to there would be one of our.
There's an X, there's a trail, actually you could walk, budding the parking lot at the beginning of SYS and then you go around and you go up the hill and you actually can go all the way to Great Hill Road.
Yeah, you can see it there.
Our discussion had to do with the school property, right?
Which isn't that across the street?
Immediately to our south.
So there's a school district property, right?
School property, I think it's across.
The property between the condos and our apartment area is owned by the school district.
So that was a discussion, trying to get a path through there, but we have to go to the school district and have a discussion.
The one that the cursor is on right now?
Below it.
Okay, what's the ownership of the other two vacant?
The other two vacant privately owned.
Okay.
So these would be some of the recommendations that we would make as a referral. And you have a septic system in place?
Yep, so we, we've designed a septic system. It's going to be a little bit larger than needed, just in case in the future maybe we want to use tap-in. It's currently with the Sub County Health Department being approved, because we want them to also approve and look at the site plan, because I know of the issues where they sometimes ask for little things changed and they got to come back to the planning. So I'm hoping to have that approval pretty soon.
Where are the, where are the two houses that exist right now?
Those two little lots, one's there.
What's there? Okay.
And your driveway access onto Major's Path is to the north?
Yeah, it's between the two houses. When we laid that out, we were a little just concerned about like, because you have the straight path, married.
Which is a horrible intersection.
So we talked about like, all right, move it down a little bit so then there's traffic. You're not adding a fourth entrance into that.
You've got better line of sight.
Yeah.
So you would be putting, moving it.
It's towards SYS between.
I guess that's sort of north.
Yeah.
Our roads aren't straight.
And are these?
Engineering is the one.
Are these, are these affordable in perpetuity or just for limited?
Perpetuity.
So this would be handled by the town highway department?
The housing department.
Yeah, so they, they talked about doing, handling them and doing some kind of approvals. So these would be, they'd also be privately owned, so we're going to fund this and build this ourselves, because it's such a need in the town, so you know, instead of having to go through the whole grant process and all that stuff. So me and my wife, we know the need of affordable housing. We've had this piece of property, I get calls every day, someone looking for apartment for rental. So our, our goal is to privately own this, which will help us a little bit on hopefully getting, you know, we're looking to fill the Southampton people who go work out here.
So you're not looking for CHF, Community Housing Funds, you're going to?
Not yet, I mean, I mean, there may be grants for the.
Yeah, but, but our goal is, so we talked to some of the banks and putting it out.
So it's a fully wooded site?
Yep.
And because you're in the APOD, our recommendation would be project limiting fences around those areas that are going to be preserved. So that, we would require that before you start clearing in there.
Unfortunately, we've seen oopses.
And, oh, sorry, yeah.
I've seen, I've seen those in friends' houses. Now the north seeing of the oopses.
So we've made it, we're, we're applying a policy that we've created about project limiting fences. And I guess your construction, your construction road would come in?
From Major's Path?
Come right in from Major's Path.
Okay.
I mean, one, the major component of affordability is, it's also energy. Maybe think about some solar, you know, especially working families, get some solar, even some of them.
Oh, yeah, I've, I've looked into that, I know that the town is going to be a big solar project up there.
Yeah.
Partner with some companies. I know there was talks about. So I kind of had some conversations, maybe there's some way to tackle that with that company.
I think that's, that's already been out, the resources that have been allocated to town taxpayers.
Yeah, well, it's sort of, sort of is, you know, with that same company and doing panels and stuff, so there's.
Solar panels.
Yeah.
Electric.
Electric charging stations, we would require some of that.
And the sanitary, unless I missed, do you have a?
Yeah, they're putting in a system.
Okay.
And it's all street utilities, so there's water. That was kind of why when we looked at the property too, is you had, because some of those lots out there, they're all on low water.
And these are, they're interesting looking, they're nice. And all, and so you have no garages essentially, parking is in front.
Yeah, it's all parking in front. It may mostly slabs, no basements.
What are the units in that building?
There is eight in most buildings, and I think there's one building of six. You ask for code of the town, you're going to even go up to eight in a building, all separate entrance, so they're over each other and they all have their own entrance within. I think that's actually the six-unit building in the middle.
How many buildings?
Five buildings.
Five buildings, all pretty much the same size?
Yeah, right around the same size.
Well, there are four eight units and one six.
One six, I think that's the six, a little bit wider, but there's four upstairs, four down.
And the entrance for upstairs, you go inside and then go inside stairs to get to the second floor?
No, we'll have, they'll have a separate entrance, like the one on the left here, where you see above the entrance is actually around the left on the side, and then there'd be stairs coming up, so you don't have to go into the same vestibule as another.
They're nice looking houses, very, very different.
Would basements considerably jack up the cost? I'm just thinking of a storage, you know, families' bicycles, garages.
Yeah, that was something we looked at.
You did.
You know, it's just, it's about keeping the cost a little lower, especially when you're trying to keep it to the affordable.
And you said one and two bedroom, excuse me, because I sort of missed the, I know you said that at the beginning, but I didn't.
Yeah, mostly two bedroom, and I think there's eight one bedrooms.
Okay, so two bedrooms, you could more than likely have at least a kid.
Yeah, which is not an issue out here, I mean, our school enrollments have gone down.
Yeah.
This is a Southampton school district?
Yes, since, yeah, we've, since 2016, we were over 1,700 kids in our district in 2016, we're 1,150 this year.
I think the only, the only school district is Riverhead that's bursting.
And nine years, we've lost almost six, we've lost about 600 kids in our school.
It's a huge percentage.
Because you can't afford to live here.
Can't afford to live here, no one can afford to live here.
The westward migration.
Getting back to the storage.
Now they're all in center marriages.
Storage is a good idea.
The number of buildings. Campion basement, we have to think about some sort of shed system where people could throw a couple bicycles, especially families, you know, attached. It doesn't have to be adjoining, build the units, maybe just all.
No, I, I got four kids, five, eight, I can tell you how many.
What do you garage look like?
That might be much more beneficial cost-wise to just do standalone shed garage kind of things.
What's that to the left of, on the corner, no, yeah, what's that here there?
So that is the sewage stream plant. The circles that you see are just the setbacks, so it's not actually that big, it's smaller.
Is there a separate road leading to that, is that going back out to Major's Path also? I saw the sequence.
Yeah, it looks like there's a separate one there.
Just, just for the.
It's just for the septic, yeah.
Okay.
So the numbers didn't quite add up when you said most, all the buildings are eight except one is six. So it's 34 units or 38 units?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Eight of 26.
Eight, oh, all right, three, three or eight, one is four, one is six.
There we go, okay. And, and for the heating, what, are you using some kind of heat pump system for, for this? What's happening here?
I haven't got the fireplace, I'm going to force air.
They use, I think on Sandy Hollow, you know, the ones on Sandy Hollow.
Sandy Hollow, they use, they use heat pumps, they use the squits both Sandy Hollow and at the place in. Spion.
Is that a high electricity cost?
It seems to be the go-to.
It's high electricity cost, yes.
But we've learned that if you're using the Water Authority, which you are, it's got to be a closed-loop system, which is much more beneficial than the open.
Yeah, but that's, we're not talking geothermal, we're talking heat pumps.
Heat pump.
Those are air heat pumps.
Yeah, so you're not going geothermal at all. Well, just to consider, I know you're not there yet, you're not there yet, but just to consider, yeah.
That's a high electricity cost, the heat pumps, PSCG, very high, for affordability, you know?
Yeah, you're trying to keep all the utilities down.
Yeah. Okay, there, I mean, we will make all these recommendations in a referral.
Sounds like you're talking site plan issues, not really environmental issues, so.
I think with the exception of possibly traffic and.
Okay, traffic.
And clearing, Claire.
And clearing.
Yes, of course, it sounds like they're proposing.
And we did a traffic study, it should be.
Okay, oh, it's online?
Yeah, it's a part of our submission. It's part of our submission, so we did it on a recommendation of a week, that was recommended by the town, so it should be in the submission.
Okay, so.
Preparing a report for the town board?
We, we will be, yes, you will be, this is your first look, I'm sure, I'm sure you're going to have a couple more comments. But today's action later on the agenda is whether you'd want lead agency, and of course, I think it makes sense that they retain lead agency.
Well, we can't, we can't, because it's a, it's a.
Zone change.
It's a zone change.
Yes, if you thought about it, they would win, yes, yeah, but you're, you're not quite.
We're not going to fight.
You're a really quick lead agency.
We'll do that later, but we have a better sense and we'll make a referral to incorporate. I mean, we would like a connecting path, that's great.
When do you want, you want to take a, be able to take a look at what they're submitted? There's nothing pending, right, just the coordination right now, right?
Right, so we have the elect to consider was voted on, approved, so the next step was secret.
Yeah, so I think today we'll link with lead agency and then maybe in first meeting in October, we could go over a report that we send over, does that make sense? Just double checking, I mean, obviously considering all options, a great place for affordable housing, but is it listed as priority for preservation or anything like that in the APOD? Just to double check with CPF. Yeah, check that.
Pretty sure there's no lawns out there.
Okay, well, still, you know, consideration for us.
The property is owned by the Epleys, right?
Yes, but an entity controlled by.
Okay. Any, anything else from our board? Okay, thank you very much for coming here, giving us a look, appreciate it. Okay, so the Bentley Hotel.
The covenant, I need that covenant to be.
Do you have changes?
Yeah, the wording just needs to be the town or it's designated, basically, that's. Yeah, that'd be it, so if you do that, okay, great, okay.
Peter, is the mic on up at the podium? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the Bentley Hotel, Hamlet and Chincock Hills, work session, welcome.
Mr. Don, good to see you. How are you Walter? Save the, yeah, so put you up there.
Yes, I know, coming to the.
So just give us your name for the record, please.
Well, Don, Don Engineering.
Claire, you want to give us an overview?
Yeah, so he came in and saw me. This is the Bentley Motel that is located on Cutter 39, just off Cutter 39 on Hill Station Road. It's a 40-unit motel. And very recently, Janice issued a administrative approval for a 975 square foot, which is just underneath the threshold, office that they were going to use. There was a small office in the, in the main buildings and they wanted to make it a bigger office. So Walter Don came to me and said that they would like to retrofit this office to be a restaurant, 40-seat restaurant accessory to the motel. I relayed that I thought there was a lot of planning issues related to that, but he decided to come in here and request it, so.
Don't think that, in speaking with Janice, that she would have given an administrative approval for anything beyond the 950, 60 square foot building. She had no idea that this, you had intention to at least propose a restaurant here, which has a whole.
And he didn't handle, he didn't handle that application, he's being brought in.
So the approval was for an office and now the office is going to become a restaurant, in fact? And the office is built already?
The office is built and it has a CEO for an office, so it is compliance, yes.
A separate structure from the motel, is it the structure by the pool?
Yes, it is the structure by the pool, yes, exactly.
Are there more of these?
Yeah, there is not more of them.
It's a two-page?
Actually, we do have more, I think I have six.
I can always give you more.
Claire, is this where the zone change was, right up there?
Uh, yes, and though it is zoned, it was zoned R20 and is now zoned HB.
Right, recently.
This lot as well as the other, the one next to it?
The one next to it, yes.
That's where the zone change was? The whole area was?
This lot and the one next door that was dance papers.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
That is HB also.
Okay, HB.
And then.
So just to clarify for me, the thousands, almost thousand square foot office, that's what they want to change into a restaurant now?
And now the office also has a basement that is another thousand square feet, which was not originally considered in the admin.
I mean, it was, it was just built?
Yes.
I'm reading this letter here, Walter, and it's saying that this is not a restaurant open to the public, just for, just for, it's just for guests staying at the hotel? Or is this, it's a breakfast sit-down place just for the hotels? Is this going to be a public restaurant?
Let Walter make a presentation.
Essentially, the Bentley Hotel has a long history, dating back to 1970, when it was a residential site. And then somehow they got advice from somebody in the town, they started building, right?
Just speak up a little, yeah.
Is that better? So then it was held in abey and stopped construction for about seven years. Finally went to the zoning board of approvals and it was approved, and then they built it. So that was probably around 1977 that the construction started, after it initially started, I believe, back in 1972. This is a long history going back. So after it was built, it was operating and each owner seemed to have a problem with hotels out here, because most of the hotels have a seasonal crowd coming out here, all want to be out here during the summer in the Hamptons and want to stay out here. So, but the rest of the year, the occupancy of the rooms are very low. In fact, we did a study of it and we did a research, we helped out the hotel, and we saw that there was 22% of the rooms that were occupied, which means that 78% of them were empty, all right? And so that means it's a hardship on the hotel owners to operate the hotels and survive, right? And I think that's why you've seen turnovers in the ownership. But when the present owners of it, which is headed by Mr. Ken Patel, they bought it several years ago, they started doing renovations for it. And if you may recall, I lived around the corner of Conic Road for, I guess it was 30 years, all right, till 2004. And at one time, it was a home for social service residents, I guess, from the welfare, right? And that created a controversy in the neighborhood, because it also increased the burden upon the town for the school system. And then it also bothered the neighbors that they had people that they felt should not be in the neighborhood. So eventually, and they were living there all year round and they had kitchens on. So as each owner came along after that, they've made a number of improvements to help it be, to help be a better community and that some of them have been, for instance, that they removed all the kitchens in the units so that you couldn't have people a year-round resident like that being assigned to live there. And also, they renovated the building, so now each one of the rooms are like a suite. Closed door for a bedroom and a living room. And they've taken, as they said, our, the opportunity to cook your own food there. So when we got involved, my firm, it was back in January of 2024, and the building was under construction at that time, and the present owners decided that they wanted to see how they could enhance their operations, so they made an association with Hyatt Hotels. And I can go over a number of advantages for that, but the major one is that the Hyatt wanted to have amenities that their other hotels generally have. And one of the things lacking there was a restaurant. So we then went to the Department of Health Service, Gapack, had meetings with them, because there's a commercial use there. And as part of that, we worked it out, so there's two, and that's the plans that you're looking at now, the set of plans that were approved or in the process of being approved by the Health Department. They've gone through it and it's taken us, to this time, to have them say, we're pending approval, but what we need from the town is a secret document showing that the hotel, restaurant can be added to the facilities, right? They do not have a liquor license yet or anything, but that would be something that would come in the future after they got this. So, so that's where I came to the meeting with Claire, all right, to say, I don't know how this happened. The Health Department didn't know how it was given a permit by the town. I said, but that's, that's not my business, that's not my responsibility, and you just heard the explanation from Claire, which is an acceptable and reasonable decision that was made. But somehow, it was unusual to them, so we dragged it on for a year and nine months now, and now they're saying it's pending approval, but please give us the documents from the town related to secret, which would be, in our opinion, a negative declaration. So now, what I've done is, I'm. So now, what I've done is I've come back and tried to say, what are the good things that would be resulting from a restaurant and looking at what your concerns were so we can address them? Because as you know, my style is to come in here, hear your concerns, try to understand them and come back and to have it resolved. And I guess I'm a better resolver than any engineer at times, all right? So, so that's the concept here. Now, I took a lot of notes, but I know you have a long schedule today.
Yes.
And I'd be happy to provide them to you. But I think the biggest thing that I've heard is a consideration of intensification of uses. And I'd like to just refer you back to the town zoning code. The town zoning code says that this is a motel hotel. And, and in it, it doesn't explain what's the difference between a motel or a hotel, isn't the code? Which is, to my opinion, is unusual, but that's the code, right? So what I did is I tried to look to see what's the definition of a motel? And what's the separate definition for a hotel? What's the difference between a motel and a hotel? Because it's been referred to as a hotel for a long time. So, you know, I asked my son, who's twenty-seven, grew up in Remsenburg and having a computer and a phone in his hand all the time. And so I said, why don't you look it up in Webster's dictionary? What did you say? Because we don't know where you can find what you say. And so I used the. Google and I found out that the definition that makes a difference is a motel does not have any amenities. A hotel has amenities and hotels are allowed amenities. And, and so the use for this property is a hotel or motel by the town standards. But it's considered everything else on here is an amenity. For instance, you need to have an approval for amenity for a swimming pool, which they had for a long time. They had needed it for a tennis court. But then they dissolved that and took it down because I guess it wasn't what the hotel patrons wanted. So this restaurant is being considered for the hotel patrons only. It's not going to be open to the public. So it's really just an amenity, which is what people desire when they go on the road.
Is this just a breakfast convenience for some hotels out here?
Three meals.
Oh, it's three meals.
Breakfast would be one of them, but they're asking for three meals. Because they feel that the people are there and the traffic along Cutter 39, as we've dealt with many times, that nothing's getting better out there right now.
There are many restaurants within a stone's throw from this spot.
And that's what I pointed out in my notes too, Jackie, that there's two ways that you can handle it. But from a traffic engineering standpoint first, if you have food service there and you're having business people stay there, it means that you like to have breakfast before you go out to a meeting. So that's a very big plus in all the hotels throughout the country now. The second is if you have a family with you, it's nice to have them be able to stay and have lunch there and use the amenities of the swimming pool. And then if you, you come back for dinner, it's nice to have a place where you could have a drink for dinner too and be there and not have to worry about driving and drinking and driving. And so what that means is that if all these amenities are serving to keep the people on the site, it means it's not creating any additional traffic impact.
Excuse me, don't all the, all the suites have mini kitchens in them?
No, they took all the kitchens out of them.
Why did they do that?
They took it because they didn't want to go to the year-round rentals and being forced by social services.
In the new renovation, you're saying there are no kitchens?
No, this, this was, these were renovations made.
Three years ago?
Several years ago.
Three years ago. Those have mini kitchens in them. I was in them.
Yeah, well, some of them had minor kitchens, not full kitchens.
They're not full, but they're kitchenettes, I would call them.
Kitchenettes they were. And they, and they took them out in the last few years, as you said, yes. But before that, they, they had it when they had the, the welfare people in there, they had the full kitchen in there that they could stay in here and cook.
But the newly renovated suites have kitchenettes. They, I wouldn't say it's not, it's not a full kitchen, it's a kitchenette, just to be clear.
They had them, but they've taken them all out.
No, I was in them. They had kitchenettes. Within the last two years.
Can you be specific about what is a kitchenette? Does it have just like a refrigerator and a microwave or does it have a sink that's associated with that?
Sink, right?
Microwave.
I was in any of those too, so I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm just telling you what I.
But it's like a regular hotel accommodation, right? Versus what he's saying is like there was a.
We don't have a lot of time. Is Hyatt the owner of this hotel?
No, they're not the owner. There's a relationship with them where they would do the reservations, which takes a big load of it off the, the hotel operator. Because they make the reservations, they, they have this building that's built now has a check-in desk right there where the entrance way. So they can check and make sure there's reservations for the food of people coming to eat there. So they make sure that it'd be just for hotel patrons only, all right? And of course, a covenant to, to agree with that, they'd also have a covenant, if necessary, to show from the old days when they used to turn places into nightclubs at the middle of the night and had noise outside. They don't want that. They want this to be a part of the Hyatt chain to meet the high standards that they have and increase the room occupancy for, for more times than it is now.
I would suggest, because there is a differentiation in terms of food service defined by the Department of Agriculture and Markets compared to the Suffolk County Health Department, which is what you're proposing, that you could, when you're coming in with this application, consider the alternative of having ready-to-eat foods that are produced at an outside commissary that are packaged, that would meet Ag and Market standards and a seating area where people could sit and enjoy that, but that there wouldn't be a full restaurant licensed by Suffolk County Health Department. And it could bring it partway without, you know, getting into the significant water flow increase that's required, the grease trap that's required by, for the restaurant under Suffolk County Code.
Took that all, that's very good points, you know. But to, just to clarify, as part of our dealing with the Suffolk County Department of Health Service, we had to design a new system, right? And that system left the two existing systems in, sanitary systems in, for each of the two hotel buildings, all right? But for the new building is where they made us go through this wringer, I guess you could say, to make so we satisfied it. And that satification, satisfaction came by us putting in a separate grease trap and then having a trash tank and then that going across the field to the, to double AN six hundred hydro action units, all right? And then it went into a distribution box and went to reaching pools. So we met all their standards and they were very thorough to make sure that we, we had the curbs and some landscape ties behind it so that vehicles wouldn't ride over that field and we have them and, and wouldn't have to have ridables tops, right?
You could still operate under New York State Ag and Markets and reduce the flow, again, that would be required. And if you look at, you know, the regulations, there are options there that I think would satisfy what Hyatt's looking for while also, you know, satisfying our concerns.
Yeah, forty, I can tell you a forty-seat restaurant is a major impact on the site in terms of traffic.
How do you see that?
You'd have employees, so many more people. There's no control over whether somebody can come from the outside.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I have the hotel room and I invite my ten siblings over to go to the restaurant. I mean, that's, there's just reality.
Yeah, we can't control it.
Well, we've talked about ways to do it because times have changed, communications, the links right to the front desk there where there's a check-in, that's also be part of the reservation for the restaurant. And, and that can be controlled by cell phones.
You can argue it both ways, Walter, you know.
So are you saying when you built the office building, they put a new sewage system in, as it is now?
No, they're requiring us to put a new sewage system in.
But the office building was completed about a year or more ago?
Without the sanitary approvals.
Okay.
And without the approval of a basement that they put in?
With the approval of the, the town.
Again.
Right, doesn't have a COO.
Does it have a COO?
Does it have a COO?
It's a different word for compliance.
It has a CO because when I inspect, it looks like a one-story. I did not know there was a full basement until he came in and showed me the plan.
Wow.
So it, I, I think that permit needs to be amended and it may need to be revoked with the CO, so.
Yeah.
Well, I, just to clarify that, we were asked to provide a CO for that building and we could not get one from anywhere because I believe it's a certificate of compliance they have for a commercial rather than a certificate of occupancy for it. We can go back and check that, Claire.
Yeah, we need to work that, yeah.
But again, your suggestion is good, but the whole plan was developed to give, to meet the necessary requirements of the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. And that's where we put in a whole system just for that building and the water demand. And, and the big thing that we tried to point out is that if you're having only a twenty-two percent occupancy of the rooms and you're giving a six thousand gallons per day for each one of the two buildings, you're not even coming close to using that demand though. And of course, they didn't buy into that. They wanted to see a separate system for this. So we'll look in, I'll go back and.
So the grease trap is installed?
No, we haven't installed anything because there's no installation given of the use of this building as a restaurant for the Health Department until the town comes back with their concerns and see how we address them. And that's what I was coming here today, so we could start getting the concerns.
So you're using it now as an office building, correct? You're using it now as an office building?
Right now, it's an office building and.
Is there a bathroom in there?
There's no bathroom in there either.
So there's no sewage at all? Okay.
Not right now.
It's a reservation desk essentially.
It's essentially a reservation check-in desk, correct?
What are you keeping in the basement?
All the equipment for the heating and electricity components coming in. And then the basement will have the connections to all the sanitary system going out. There'll be two systems coming out of the building.
If a restaurant, if you have a restaurant.
Absolutely. Right, I, I.
If, yeah.
Many hotels have the breakfast going down and that, I think that's what you're describing.
Yeah, it's the delineation between those two agencies where you could have.
Hyatt's.
You know, even a permit to sell a bottle of wine, beer, et cetera.
Not a restaurant.
This is, this is looking to be a different type of facility for a different type of clientele.
Yeah. Yeah. There are, right, as Claire said, many hotels that simply have a table with cornflakes and juice and.
And maybe a waffle maker.
And coffee and whatever, and no kitchen, you know. So I think given the constraints of this site, you might want to take that back to your client. Well.
Yeah, but we can, we can, we can talk further. I think I've got, we've gotten some guidance from the board.
And I do. I like that guidance and I'm saying, I'll take that back to them. And, and I guess if we did things like you suggest, you think that would be, put us, put us in a better position to be considered here.
Alternative to a restaurant.
I think you want to look at the accident data of the intersection of Hill Station Road and North Highway.
Yeah, I think like the, the wording restaurant is really, you know, the amount of traffic, the amount of potential use, the amount of water flow is just way too much of intensification on the site. But if you look at a market that could include items that are ready, packaged and people can enjoy them on-site, then you're under Ag and Markets and.
And if it's a market building and the current space, it wouldn't require any bathroom. It would just be prepackaged food. And those suites are set up with little tables for people to actually have food in their room.
Absolutely.
So, I mean.
Have a living room too.
A living room and, and, yeah. So they could certainly get the prepackaged food and eat in their rooms.
They'd always get Uber too, you know, and that would bring more traffic in because there'd be another vehicle coming into it. So you can look at it different ways, so. I'm already looking at it from a traffic engineering standpoint.
I think with the resources of Hyatt, maybe they can identify one location where they have a forty-unit hotel with a full-service restaurant for breakfast, lunch and dinner. I kind of find it hard to believe that a full-service restaurant can survive with a forty-unit hotel. Especially with twenty-two percent occupancy. A residence only, right.
Yeah, I don't.
We're hoping that would increase the occupancy by having this and I think the records are showing that now.
I think the fact that the Southampton Inn in Southampton Village, which is in a much better location, has serious challenges with keeping rooms filled in the winter. And they have a restaurant, so.
Okay.
That's my business comments.
So anything more before we go out of this work session?
No, I think you've given them some guidance and then I will talk to them further about the application.
Thank you very much for your input.
Thank you, Walter. Closing out the work session and going into the afternoon session. Number three, a net subdivision broke is off the agenda. Number four, bay water, seawater, well water is off the agenda. And complete information that the. Seth, number five, Mill Road, twenty-six Mill Road. You want to go over the applicant here?
Carl's here or shall we, we should wait for Carl.
He was, he was.
Hand out the revised pre-app report.
I wonder if that reduces the rates in the winter time?
So we looked at the report together in our last meeting. I thought we just gave the recommendations and how we revise them or your comments.
Hi, Carl.
Hey, Carl.
How are you?
See everyone. So just briefly, twenty-six Mill is a two-lot subdivision located in Spiong Remsenburg, the R forty district. This is a two-point-one-three acre lot that will be divided in.
Did you get them?
Two equal halves. We had looked at, yeah, so point one was owing to the proximity of the tidal wetlands found along the Spiong River and the assertion of wetlands jurisdiction by the Conservation Board. The Planning Board suggests that the applicant contact the adjacent lot owner situated at thirty Mill Road and seek permission to have the wetlands flagged by the Conservation Division to confirm if the subject property lies within wetlands jurisdiction.
Which one?
That was number one.
One recommendation.
So number two, again, if it is confirmed by wetland flagging that the subject property is within two hundred feet of the tidal wetlands along the Spiong River, the Planning Board will provide the Conservation Board with draft conditions of approval pursuant to section two ninety-two thirty-nine B to be finalized at the time of final application.
I just wanted to add that, you know, obviously we'll seek it, but we can't be expected.
I was going to say, I don't know, Christine sort of.
Yeah, I, I feel like there needs to be a definitive, like if after diligent time you can't do that, then we need to move on.
Yeah.
A signed affidavit saying that something was.
No, I think, because I think most owners would say, no, you can't, you can't flag my property. So at what point do we stop our quest for?
Upon proof of diligence to the satisfaction of the Planning Board. You can come make your case that you tried, you can't.
Upon a showing of reasonable diligence.
Yeah.
Well, we had talked about flagging. Would the town allow them to flag our property?
They did. I think they flagged that already. I don't know that it's within two hundred feet though.
But if you get that, that flagging at the corner of the property.
That's town, isn't that town property?
Town has flags and the property to the south has flags.
Okay.
But Marty was not comfortable with the idea of connecting the dots.
Okay, I understand, but you know, if we can at least get the distance from where the flagging is to the north, to the northeast line.
Yeah, well, if you have a flag there, sure, because you can flag your own property.
But that's me, you can, you can do what you can.
If that shows that portions are within two hundred feet, but, but if it doesn't, I think that's where you end. Because there is no flagging right now.
The larger issue is, is creating a condition that requires an applicant to interact with, with a private party. I, I'm not sure, municipality, yes.
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, we did that with future cross-access.
Yeah.
We made it conditional. We're not mandating that they have because we can't, he has no control over that.
I mean, reasonable efforts to locate and request.
To the satisfaction of the Planning Board. He'll let them come back and tell you.
Because the issue here is not like this is segmented. You know, wetlands are one continuous path. And if we're missing a piece of the flagging, then we should try to get that flagging.
If you can.
If we can.
Right.
If you can't, if you approach the, and they say that you're not allowed on, then.
Then that's it. He can come back and tell you that and.
Wouldn't it be more appropriate for the town to approach the, the wetland, the Conservation Board rather than a private party? They might not be in the best of terms.
Are you, are you starting out on bad terms?
I mean, actually it's helpful if we're in bad terms, right? I tried. They won't call me back.
I think we have to assume everyone's.
Uh, no, there are no known bad terms and we will make commercially reasonable efforts, whatever standard you want to put in.
Okay, so you can add that language.
I will amend that, that section. Moving on to number three, the Planning Board acknowledges the findings of the landmarks and historic board that the quote, "existing dwelling retains a high degree of historic integrity and is recognized by the town as an historic resource" RS twenty-two, end quote, and suggests that the applicant explore opportunities to preserve the historic structure through landmarking and/or consultation with the Community Preservation Board. landmarking and/or consultation with the Community Preservation Fund. Number four, recognizing the Trails Advisory Board's recommendations for the expansion of the trail located on 24 Mill Road and the opportunity to expand this, quote, "open space," which was acquired by the CPF in 2020 to, quote, "recreate in and enjoy," the Planning Board suggests the applicant consider the sale of the proposed Lot 2 to the Community Preservation Fund to further the town's aforementioned goals.
I just want to be clear on that, it's a consideration. If the applicant decides it's not for them, it's not like we have to engage with CPF. Okay.
That's clear then? Okay.
Are you reading all of these? Are these all that we discussed?
Each one it had a little tweak, I mean, I can, I can stop here, or we can continue Number five, the applicant shall be advised that at the time of the final application, the Planning Board may consider buffers, easements, conditions, and restrictions dependent on the environmental conditions found on and around the subject parcel. Number six, the final approval of the subdivision map will be conditioned upon the cement of a site disturbance application to the Planning Division with an updated survey depicting the current extent of site disturbance tree clearing and the locations of all trees identified to the species level with a diameter at breast height, which is four feet above grade of 12 inches or more.
I think, we're not in the APOD, I think that's a little onerous upon reading it, to have a tree survey is a massive undertaking.
Well, is this going to be part of our tree, the tree ordinance that's going to happen? We're anticipating.
Yeah, but there's nothing on the books right now, so I would ask.
Well, do you have substantial trees here?
No, I don't think we do, but I can't say for sure. I just know that that standard, it's not in the APOD, you know, we're not sure within wetlands jurisdiction, I just think that's putting a significant burden on an applicant.
I agree. It's unusual, too, we haven't mandated this on other applications.
Well, we're trying to not cut down as many trees as we've been cutting down, so.
We certainly, I believe, need to find out the extent of clearing, but we will be, if there is wetlands, we will be going through a 292B process, and at that point, we can reevaluate, and as I'd said before, we are, we have open to us buffers, easements, covenants, and restrictions, so we can certainly use other tools to achieve our goals without necessarily locating all the trees.
Have you, the land has been surveyed? I'm asking about any old trees here.
It's been surveyed, but not for vegetation. If you want a clearing analysis, I suppose we can present that, but you're not, again, you're not in an aquifer, but.
It doesn't.
Typically, well, how we handle in this area is creating buffers. If we've identified areas of important vegetation, let's say stranded trees, we don't go and preserve the specific trees. If we need a buffer, we'll create a buffer, because what happens is, if you designate specific trees for preservation, here comes the hurricane, there go the trees, now you're in violation. Trees that were supposed to be on the survey, now they're gone, they're stumps, or the stumps have been removed. So if there's an area that we're going to designate as non-disturbance, let's identify that.
And put a project limiting fence in here.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it require that?
Yep.
Because what's happening is that, you know, builders are coming in and taking trees down, you know, I mean, the corner of Butter Lane in Bridgehampton is an empty lot, because it's been clear cut, and we're trying to avoid this, and the language that Seth is using, God bless him, is in an effort to make people aware of the fact that we're trying to preserve what we've got left.
I understand.
Go ahead.
For some clarity, do we want to?
Clearing analysis, a clearing analysis.
A clearing analysis.
So just a clearing analysis.
The other, I, yeah, I did not have any changes.
Yeah, those are all standard.
Okay.
So I can make those modifications, and we can adopt the pre-app report.
Okay. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor.
Thank you.
Anthony, do you want to do the chair?
Yeah, just real quick, technically, we have on the agenda this evening the continuation of the DEIS review for 94 Dune Road. That's not going to happen tonight, we're just, I thought I did this last time, I didn't. We're going to reschedule for October 23, 2025.
Okay. Motion to reschedule this hearing to October 23 by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor. Prender, you want to take 70 and 80, yeah?
Yeah, this is the applicant for September 25, so there's no action, we're still within the deadline.
Okay, so we don't have to?
No, no action.
Nothing, okay, so 7 is done.
And then this was where I asked if.
Yes, you could take it. Right. Is that the St. George camp?
No, it's Sherwood Hollow.
Sherwood Hollow, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so are you Sherwood? Come on up. The owners, the sign mark, Calabiana.
Yeah.
So this was last before the board in July.
So we just have your name for the record?
Captain Calabiana.
Kathleen Casabianca.
Calabiana. Calabiana.
Okay.
This is 10 Ginny Wayne or Lot 11 in Sherwood Hollow subdivision in Hampton Biz, which is approved in 1987.
Anthony, can you pull that up?
Yeah. 10 Ginny Wayne in Hampton Biz. The owners were here in July requesting an 80% clearing where the covenants and restrictions have a maximum limit of 50%. The board recommended that the owner reconsider or get a little creative and plant elsewhere to offset whatever they're proposing to clear. In lieu of that, the owners have submitted a letter revising their request to 65% as opposed to 80, and Katie's here, I think that you guys had an area of where they're proposing clearing, if I understand correctly, not clearing of trees, but clearing of under storage to have a little bit extra lawn, so that's what's before you today.
So what's the total percentage of clearing?
65.
65.
65.
Instead of 80, but 50 is what the covenant is.
50 is what the covenant, and this is, this is not in the APOD, these restrictions are from covenants.
So it's a covenant amendment, so we need a supermajority.
Yeah, and I think that have come forward, what we had suggested is, in order to entertain it, that we would just do a public hearing so that the other members of the subdivision could weigh in if they wanted to, and then.
I actually did go door to door, and I have signatures from everybody of letters of no objection, because I wanted to try and explain the process.
Yeah, that's great, great.
So I wanted to submit those.
We'll pass those out for you.
And it's not currently over cleared?
It's not, they're within the 50%, they're at 49 and a half percent, and I have an updated survey that reflects that, which I've confirmed on site.
I mean, how many neighbors?
Well, 18 neighbors.
It's 19 is the full subdivision.
And you've looked at these, right?
No, this is the first time it's.
Yeah, I'm going to leave them with you.
Yeah, I'll take one for the record.
So then, I don't believe, we need a public hearing if you've got.
Yeah, no, they were very supportive.
What you're suggesting as part of the clearing is removing some of the underbrush, but not removing the trees.
Yeah, I took photos, it's really just, I mean, the neighbors are very supportive because it isn't kind of an ice, so I can, you can look at the photos, it's just, we're not taking any trees, we're going to leave, there's only one copper beech tree, it's really like briers, raspberries, it's overgrown.
Showing the question area, I could show that to you. So do you.
Is your copper beech in?
Under story of the corner of the lot.
Copper beech, you're good?
Yeah.
Many of them have the, you know, the virus.
Yeah.
Good, that's such a beautiful tree.
Yeah. Beech under.
Thanks for doing this work, I know it was a little tense at the last discussion that we had, but, you know, I think you've done a great job of, you know, alleviating our concerns about it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
And these help too.
Okay, Gloria, motion to approve?
Yeah.
Motion and second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor? Thank you, Kathleen, thank you. Teresa, you have, is Teresa here?
I'm going to handle her one item.
She has an extension, right?
Let's go back to eight, we skipped eight.
Eight, yeah.
Oh, Bud Hampton, right, okay.
All right, so we're good? Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a little house cleaning here, actually. Housekeeping. I, thanks for the correction. We did a conditional approval for Bud Hampton, everybody can take a look, you know, at the rendering.
We had some site plan changes, so.
They have been working with the DOT, you know, there's some major work happening as a result of this 900 square foot building.
They're actually building a second lane on, level on the highway.
Which necessitated some minor changes to the plan that we approved. I'm actually okay moving forward with these as the final maps because the changes aren't drastic, but some really good things is, they had them push the parking that was located sort of in here, back here, and increased the green area in the front, which was good.
Is that the new one?
This is the new one.
Okay.
So it looks like the buffer in the back does get a little smaller, but it should be noted that that's adjacent to highway business zoning also, so there. This is located a little further south, they wanted the cross-access pushed further to the back, actually, which makes more sense rather than having it right on the road.
So everything's pushed to the back.
Everything's pushed from the road. Everything's, with the parking, that was really good, it gives some more wiggle room for the landscaping, so I wanted to show the board this, and then the big thing was, and I would have to amend the resolution for next time, but one of the conditions was securing the DOT permit before a building permit could be issued. The problem is that all the other conditions, the relocation of the bus stop, which is shown on the plan, always made a condition of the CO. This DOT thing is going to go on and on and on until they get to that light, so I was just going to change the resolution that it all be secured prior to the issue of the CO. And I'll put it off for next time, I just didn't, you know, I don't have the resolution.
Do you have some revised elevations to show us? Can you bring them the next time?
I can bring them the next time, yeah, sure.
Take that fence away and.
Absolutely.
We really like a landscaping plan.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure the board was good with this and that they're good changing that reso, and I'll have it next time.
Okay, so we're taking a vote on this?
No, I actually don't.
No action.
So next time you resolve to change it to CO?
It depends, I'll tell you what, if the board's comfortable with doing a resolution that amends the site plan to make the DOT permit.
We could do that now.
Prior to initiative of CO, we could do that right now.
Why not?
Yeah.
Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor?
You still want me to come back with?
I'd like to see the elevation, it's important that this thing look.
Yeah, there were questions from the community about what they thought.
Taller bushes, I think that was the.
Taller bushes, lots of greenery.
All right.
I'll get you something for next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Carl.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Okay, everybody, 17 is off the agenda, you know that.
Yeah.
Seven to 10.
Yeah, number 10's next.
10? Did you do 10?
No.
Not yet.
St. George, I thought that was the extension, oh.
It is, that's Teresa, she's not here right now, so I'm going to handle that for her. Just an extension for submission of the final maps, and it's until, I'm sorry, it's a extension of the pre-application report, their first one-year extension to make it valid until August 22, 2026.
Motion. Motion by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor? Let me just jump to the, we've done the maps, Gloria, signed plans?
Signed plans for 21. Francis Mulby and Target and an add-on Brown Buddha.
Brown Buddha.
All those signed plans?
Signed plans. So 23, 21, 22, 23, 23 being an add-on. Okay, so let's go back.
Number 11?
To 11, 28 Enterprise Zone, Prender, that's you.
Yes. This is an extension of a pre-submission report that was done last September, so we extended until September 12 of 2026. Shannon's here, I don't know if you want to present anything further, but.
It's not necessary.
Motion.
Kate, motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor? Okay, site plan, part of the north edge stables. This is that parcel under land.
Yeah, I think under land at the corner of Scuttle Hole.
Who's representing this?
Southeast corner, Wayne Bruin is, I think he might be outside, I can go browse in it, I could just peek in the hall.
This is the fun one.
I have to.
Yeah. I don't think you should have two stories, like condos.
All right, so I'm looking to try to do an exec session at 4, so maybe we'll take the people who appear.
Yeah.
This was last before the board about this time last year, last summer, in September for pre-submission, the report was adopted in September, and now they're before to the final application for the ag construction permit and the special exception uses. I could go through sort of what's changed, or maybe Wayne can, but it's before you for completeness.
For completeness?
Yeah.
And scheduling a public hearing?
Yes, however, I'm recommending it being deemed incomplete, I included the review form in that, a little packet I handed out that has a list of items required, really it's all summarized it all at the end, so we don't have to go through the whole thing, but.
All right, so we're looking at this, is this revised now from?
It is, there are some changes, largely the footprint, the layout, the location of the structures remain unchanged, there are some changes, if you want, I could go through it or have Wayne go through it, they limited.
I think just, if you have time, happy to go through it, but, you know, we have seen the list, and they're very minor items, actually, I have plans that are already revised and everything ready to go, but rather than submit and have staff have a look at all that, we understand it was deemed as incomplete beyond for the next meeting.
Okay.
But if you want me to go through, among the biggest changes was, there was two access points, there's only one access point, we reduced the number of agricultural housing units, size and the number of horses has remained the same, and the garage and the indoor riding rink are all the same size, but they didn't change, but.
I think one of the requests that we asked for is that that staff housing be moved to the south, and that parcel has some kind of private arrangement on it?
Yeah, there's a 500-foot private easement on the south property line.
They're the nearest residents, or to the south, so there were reasons to keep that area open there as well, as well as that private agreement, as well as provide, you know, open space along the north and keep it open along the south, as well as paddocks to the rear next to the winery, as well as space along the frontage. This is one of those where every neighbor is going to, no matter where you go.
There's still six units for housing?
Yes.
Right, three, two in each.
Yes.
I think one of the concerns was the staff housing being two-story, is that still?
Yeah, they reduced it to one story.
It's now one story now.
Three buildings.
Could you point that out again?
It's these three buildings here, before it was two larger buildings, the second floor, and now it's a single floor, six units, each with two bedrooms, so there's twelve bedrooms, I think before it was 16 bedrooms.
Twelve bedrooms, yes.
And they're still in the same location, still in a row.
And the reason we put them here is that provides a softening of the view to the large indoor riding rink from Scuttle Hole Road, and you see the housing before that, so that was.
Big enhancement.
Yeah, and that was one of the issues, the access, the two access was another issue, the general scale and the locations of the building, and then having this be a scenic sort of corridor called out in the master plan was an issue.
Along Scuttle Hole Road.
Yeah, the garage, originally, we commented on the three buildings that are 15,000 square Yeah, the garage, um, originally we, we commented on the three buildings that are 15,000 square feet or more. The garage is slightly smaller than 15,000 square feet now, but as Wayne said, the riding ring and the indoor riding ring and the stables still remain the same. About 21,000, with the riding ring and 19,000 square feet for the barn.
We did provide and looked at every horse farm this board has approved and provided the data on each of those, and this is pretty much consistent with those approvals.
Would you be able to tell us how many, how, what percentage of ag soils you're disturbing?
I don't have that information.
Okay, but that's a question.
Yeah, we can get your.
Yeah, it's all a class one or two, a class two soils. I think they're, the engineering plan called out a limit of disturbance of, uh, 23.9 acres, which is essentially this pocket here, as well as the paddocks.
The paddocks aren't being disturbed.
Oh, I think, I just think it might have been included in that.
Twenty-three acres disturbed out of 29?
Just shy of 24 or 29, so it's almost.
Almost a percent.
Almost a little bit, right.
I think that's correct.
I know the ag advisory.
It's on the plan, it's just sort of bobbled.
Yeah, it's bobbled out, so, but maybe just have them revisit it or.
Yes, I think that's important because the ag advisory committee is going to want that. All right, so let's deem it incomplete and get a thorough review of it at a later date. Thank you, thank you, Wayne, thank you, Prenda. Motion to deem it incomplete by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor. Post extension, seven in favor. Anthony, you have Jade Fritz for the 17th time.
110th time. Just real quick, Jackie, I have 13, 14, 15, and 16. Let me just take care of number 15.
Yes, if somebody is here, exactly.
Linda Riley, actually, if the board looks up, this will be very quick. Because this is a ag residential site plan, it's a large ag piece, so it's subject to site plan. Everything was approved, they did one extension, now they're just asking for another two-year extension, they haven't started construction.
First, one house.
One, yeah, it's a single-family residence that restructured. So I'm just recommending a reapproval of the original site plan, subject to all, and the resolution was in the packet, which would make it valid until August 22nd, 2027.
Motion.
Motion. Motion by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor. Paddocks, extensions, that was easy.
That was easy. Sorry for the wait.
1456, Anthony? Oh, yeah, whoever is here.
Jade Fritz, number 13.
Let's take Fred, and nobody else in the audience is on the agenda. Here's Joe Gauze. Joe Gauze, is that? Is Joe Gauze? I'm going to take executive session.
Jim Walker, vendor signs. This is a.
See, you got to ease them.
I know.
What do you think about?
I'm going to use very easily.
Yeah, so Anthony gave us the draft report.
Yeah, Anthony?
And.
So the board has a resolution here, this is a preliminary. Remember, this was classified as a major subdivision, so you go through a pre-application preliminary and a final. We don't get a lot of these, so we don't see the preliminary very often. So you should note, just as a little, you know, reminder here, the preliminary approvals, when you look at the conditions of approval, there's usually not a lot of them, the purpose of the preliminary, it took a long time to get there, is to establish the layout and the yield. All of those other conditions about covenants and all the other final stuff will happen at the time of final. So I just wanted to be clear that, you know, the board understood there.
Thank you for the, for the tutorial.
A little tutorial. So I have a resolution here, the board is very familiar now, and just as a reminder, the plan has been revised. They reduced the number of the affordable lots, because initially this was being proposed as a density incentive.
Yeah, it was seven or something.
They reduced the number of affordable lots, and those two affordable lots will be issued development rights, and those will be transferred off-site to another town property, that way they're doing a project. And the two lots in the back are supposed to be purchased by CPS, so those will also be preserved, those were the big changes.
So you have questions here, Anthony?
No, I just got my resolution here, I'll go through it quickly, I won't, I won't go crazy here. So everybody knows the project, we've looked at it for a long time, so I'll just start on page one, the findings. Number one, this was a type-one action, and after some time, back in June 12th of 2025, this board issued a negative declaration, and we did coordinate with all involved agencies. We had a public hearing on July 10th, and it was closed at its 30-day comment period. The comments were limited, basically, there was concerns, because there is a hunting preserve adjacent to this property, there was concern for the two back lots here being so close, but as we know, as of right now, the proposal is to eliminate those, so.
Is that, but isn't that not hunting anymore?
No, it's going to be, continued to be hunted. They, they, yeah, in fact, that that's what they're going to be doing there.
Do you have another, do you have another app form? Dennis doesn't have one.
Thanks, Anthony.
And just, number three, we did originally a pre-app way back in 2019 on this, actually. And there was a yield map and a PRD plan at the time, but those maps have been changed, as everybody knows. Four talks about the environmental sensitivity of the site, the extent of the wetlands, it's equivalent to roughly eight acres of this site. And there may be some endangered species, including tiger salamander, northern long-eared bat, and the creeping John's wart. And we also note that there's conservation easements, which we just discussed on the adjacent properties. So we, we are aware of the environmental sensitivity. Number five, because of this, the map has been redesigned for the reasons stated, the two CPF lots and the two affordable lots being transferred, purchased or transferred. Number six talks about the standard year yield plan, it's grayed out because I have to put in the revision date of the plan, and I have a couple spelling errors in there, but the, the ultimate map that we got showed eight lots, okay? That was, you know, there was a lot of debate back and forth, but we have a yield of eight lots on this property, and that's what the baseline was. And number seven, the current plan, which is the map you're looking at in front of you, which is the revised map with the lots being transferred. Number eight, this complies with the workforce housing, they actually really only needed to provide one. Number nine, there was a DEC approval for this map, it's grayed out because I have to put in, there were so many maps and so many revisions, I just, but that's where the DEC approval is going to go. And obviously, they'll have to go back to the DEC. We did the division of fire division came back to comments, they have no further recommendations at this time. Pre-imp, fire, no recommendations at this time. Page four, all the way to five, those are all the comments from the, from the engineer. That was also based on the presumption that there would be a common driveway providing access to the affordable lots and CPF lots. So should that change, well, as it's supposed to, these wouldn't be relevant anymore, so I just wanted to point that out. But it also recommends preliminary engineering approval. Bottom of page five, highway department came back, said they have no comments. We've got this conservation force summit, grayed out for the reason that I actually, on the preliminary, forgot to refer it to the environment division. They did go out and verify the wetlands as accurate, so that I want, however, they did give 15, 16 comments under the original application, so I was sure to incorporate. Many of the comments are being addressed, obviously, with the preservation of the CPF lots, a lot of this has gone away, so. But I did want to incorporate their comments in there, because we do acknowledge the environmental conditions here. Page eight, the Suffolk County Department of Public Works came back, because it's Pre-imp and Sack Harper Turnpike. Again, relating to common driveways, that's probably going to go away on the next round. And there appears to be some Belgian block curving in there right away, that's. Next one was about the trails advisory, we actually did get comments around today, so I will incorporate those comments, they're supporting the map. They did map out a potential trail that would go through what will ultimately be town open space. They raised some questions about, given the proximity, so this board is, I was at that meeting, I specifically went to this meeting so I can make sure I can base your concerns. Says the Planning and Development Administrator, I did get her letter today, as a matter of fact, and she says, the transfer of the density off-site and getting rid of these lots in the back is a better alternative than a density incentive plan for this site. So at the end of the day, we only have three, three existing residences and two new ones, and everything else goes away, so. The next one, I didn't get anything from Carabac yet, unfortunately, that's definitely family, so we'll just hope to know if they receive anything. And we didn't get any comments from the Health Department or the CAC. So it's, I have a resolution to approve the preliminary map of Jane Fritz, nine lots, two open space parcels totaling 11.97 acres, equaling 51% of the property, subject to the following, submission of an updated standard yield plan stamped by a licensed design professional, which they submitted today, four final versions of the maps for signature. This preliminary approval is based on the secret, I just want to get this on the record, I think it's important. This preliminary approval is based on the secret review that occurred for this project, as noted herein, which acknowledges the overall ecological sensitivity of the property and surrounding area in addition to the adjacent hunting preserve to the west and north, which will result in lots eight and nine being purchased by Community Preservation Fund and the development rights associated with six and seven being transferred to another site for workforce housing development. Prior to any final approval or signature of final maps, the planning board shall be provided with the necessary documentation that assures the purchase of the Community Preservation Fund lots and the transfer of the workforce housing lots to an off-site location. Any deviation from this plan will be subject to a new planning board review, including as required under the secret. So just wanted to make sure we put something in there.
Good, it's good.
The applicant shall know whether the open space is being dedicated to the town, I believe it is. Number five will be updated to reflect the Trails Advisory Board comments. Six talks about the required wetland setbacks, which will be noted on the map. Seven talks about compliance with the requirements of the New York State DEC, acknowledging the potential existence of rare endangered species, which may require a taking department from the DEC, so we put that in there. Eight, the New York State DEC approval shall be updated to reflect the latest map prior to signature of the final maps. Lots subject to clearing restrictions and fertilizer restrictions, pursuant to 33067, that's the APod, to be further evaluated at the time of final application due to the existing development patterns and wetland buffers to be imposed. Ten, the applicant showed note the adjacent easements and buffers, so we know exactly what's on the adjacent properties in relation to this property. The street number shall be shown, and they'll need Health Department for the final approval.
Good, complete, good report.
Yes, and it's a really good outcome for a challenging application.
Challenging property, we, we.
Very, very good, thank you.
Okay.
Win-win.
So, any other questions on the board? Okay, a motion to accept?
Before you go ahead, Jackie.
A second.
Yes.
I think the board should be aware that Karen has to go back with the legal documents to the state, along with the map, and get the final sign off. There will not be any taking permit. We avoid the taking permit by providing the, the plan the way it's drawn, but to finish, I say, Anthony, the DEC stuff, what, what you need to do is Karen draws up the legal documents, board looks at them, she sends them to Kevin Jennings, along with the map.
But it doesn't prevent this action.
No, I just wanted to let you know that's what happens.
Okay.
So you don't, we don't have.
It's a long trail.
There's no incidental taking permit.
Great, great. So it was motion by Gloria, and second by Kate, all in favor. Post extension, seven in favor, congratulations.
Thank you.
Great one.
Okay, who, who is left here, because we're going to, we have to go into an exec session at four o'clock.
I don't see anyone left.
So.
That's a jerk.
I just got two extensions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Number 14.
Yeah.
That's to, actually, it's only going to bring it until December of this year, this is if you look at production holding.
I identify the application, please.
Production Holding LLC.
Production Holding LLC, 57 and 61 Station Road. Just to remind the board, it's two lots here, they were doing a four-lot subdivision, there's already three existing residents on this property, three legally pre-existing, you know, and then they would convert the fourth one back here, they've been before the zoning board, they're stuck in the Health Department. So right now, we're just going to do an extension, which will make the pre-app report valid until December 15th of 2025.
Motion. 2025?
Yes.
Just a couple more months and.
Yeah. Motion by Gloria.
Second.
Second by Dennis, all in favor.
Aye.
Post extension, seven in favor. Okay, you've got 1456?
Yep, that's just, that's that special trade contractor right here on Spianak Riverhead Road, the one that Susanna Herman was handling. Just an extension for submission of the final maps is the first one, and that will bring it to November 18th, 2025.
November 18th, 2025, motion by Gloria, and second by Dennis, all in favor.
Aye.
Post extension, seven in favor. Seventeen is off.
That's 103 County Road 39.
103 County Road is off, that leaves us.
The Mariner, what did we decide, we did the Mariner, right?
Eighteen.
We haven't coordinated yet.
Oh, oh, okay.
We have to relinquish lead agency.
You do that by resolution, oh, Claire, that's Claire.
Claire's not here.
It's Claire, Claire.
And the next, the next two are Claire.
Three.
During that discussion, we were saying we wouldn't even have jurisdiction here, right? So we wouldn't even, or do we just acknowledge that we don't have jurisdiction?
No, we could, we could.
We'll have to finish with.
I see.
Yeah.
Wouldn't like to, we wouldn't get it.
Hey.
There you are, Claire.
What's next?
Eighteen, the Mariner housing, the coordination with.
So I think I prepared a resolution, and in it, I say, planning board received the secret coordination, and does not request lead agency for the possession, however, the planning board would follow up with a referral as before.
Great. Motion by Gloria, and second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Post extension, seven in favor, Delandro Farms.
Yeah, so we talked about this at the last meeting.
Are you both here, you're here for this swing, yeah?
I brought my turtleneck, guys.
I thought you two were in cahoots.
I consult each other often.
Okay.
Tony, he has the degree, you don't have, you should have a degree, you have a degree.
I do have. I hope so.
Practicing with that.
You're somewhere.
Practicing without a degree.
Before this board, you better have.
You don't need to be, have a degree, but you need to pass the bar exam.
Yeah.
That's true.
Was there another hand out there?
That's a.
Okay, Claire, we have, we have a.
Yep.
Okay, let's go.
We're going to all get this together, because I've only printed seven. So yes, so this is what we discussed, we discussed, the last meeting discussed doing the sucra because they need it for the Health Department purposes. And the applicant had revised the map to be consistent with the pre-app reports, which is the relocation of the driveway in the center, buffers on the north and east, or south and west. And so the board was willing to do the secret determination, which is what's in part of you, the part two. And that's the action today.
Okay, you standing at the point?
Yes, yes. And just as a reminder, this property is, it's, consists of two separate parcels, the Norlody parcel, and as Claire indicated, our original designs show three, two flag lots with all three lots sharing a common driveway off the north side. Neighbors to the north and west were concerned about having that driveway, even though there's an existing driveway there, so. Claire suggested this layout, or the board, the pre-app report actually suggested this layout, or to flip the flags to the south, even though there's common driveway in residences, our client saw some merit in this proposal. We're in front of the Health Department, the Health Department, there's three dwellings, normally, when you do a subdivision, they want you to upgrade the septics and then get, get the approval. In this case, they agreed to at least put a covenant that before any lot could be sold, we have to tear down all the structures. We understand, however, from a zoning standpoint and from the planning board's standpoint, that'll get us Health Department approval, but for us to get our final map signed, all the houses would be removed. So that will occur, and there'll be, all the septics for the new will be all IA systems, so.
Two things that are important, one is that it is an aqua-protectionally district, it was historically a farm, and during your process, you had recommended that it be brought back to conformance, and they're willing to do that, so that is part of this decision today that you're doing.
Yeah, I think that, like you've done on other subdivisions, where it would be a condition, if and when a house is built, they would have to restore.
Revenge.
A certain percentage of the property.
Yep, okay, good.
We feel that, that gives the flexibility to that landowner to figure out which portion of the lot they want to revegetate, but I think that was the agreement that we, the client was willing to do, to make sure that occurs.
Claire?
And the second thing is, it's, all the buildings are coming down, which was, and my question, that was clear when we had the pre-app, but the landmarks was not concerned about the buildings on the property. If they are older, they've been adjusted so much that they're not, the integrity's not there, I guess. So that, I did review that since the last meeting, so.
So that, I did review that since the last meeting, so. So if you want to just look at it real quick?
Sure.
Impacts on land is the typical impacts associated with three single-family residences. No impacts on geological features or surface waters. Impact on groundwater, obviously, it's aqua protection overlay district. I do mention the revegetation as being part of the proposal, and no impact.
The IA systems will help.
And the IA systems, yeah, I can mention that.
Removal, the existing substance, new IA, IA, different, new houses.
Okay, I'll mention that, too. Impact on flooding, no. Impact on air, no. Impact on plants and animals. I say no, but I guess we're restoring the positive impact. Do you want me to mention that, restoring the APOD? So I will check that. Natural vegetation. Impacted agricultural resources, I do say yes, because it was historically cleared. It is not prime egg soils, though. It was used as like a florist. Aesthetic resources, no. Historic, I do mention this, and this is my little explanation. One single-family residence is from 1913, other structures compromised according to the Landmarks Board, structures proposed to be demolished. And then no impact of open space, critical environmental areas, it is APOD, of course. So I again mentioned the revegetation. No impact on transportation, energy, noise, human health, community plans, or community care.
Good.
I move it.
Any other questions?
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, third night deck, second by Gloria, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions, seven in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Health Department, yep, got it.
We gave him six months to get the Health Department and come back with the final.
Okay. Number twenty, Oceanside.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
Joseph Gazza, five Ogden Lane Quark. I'm here today because Claire and I have a question, because Claire has a question.
Well, I don't have a question. I know, right? No, so I'll just do a little backgrounds. Yeah, so this is a pending opening of an old file map. This has been going on for a couple of years. Jackie originally handled it, and, and there are wetlands, impacts on flooding, and access. There was a whole, I think everybody's familiar with this. The original access for this old file map was through what became Oakland Farms subdivision. Portions of it were purchased.
By the town.
Town that cut off the access. So the applicant is proposing through over an easement to connect from Peters Lane to such a property. Now, with old file maps typically, what you're doing is you're opening old roads, and you're opening, and you're consolidating land that was part of a subdivision, whether it was a part of a subdivision that never got really reviewed or not, that's, that's why we have the regulations. But, so it was always considered type two action, because you're opening roads. You're developing something that was already contemplated. And so that's the section of the code that's like referencing the opening of the road section. There is no road to open here. This isn't, the access is over an easement. And so my question, as I helped prepare that report to the Zoning Board of Appeals from you, was whether this was an unlisted action and not a type two. Now, once I issued that report, obviously, Joe came to me and said, no, I'm opening a road, and I still don't see it. I'm looking at the code, I'm looking at our code about number for subdivisions, and I do not see anything that listed it's type two. This is just SECR, so if you want to see the sections.
You're creating a road.
You're creating access that's not a road.
Well, it's a driveway.
It would never be a road.
It's an easement.
It's an easement, it's over for access.
Or a driveway.
Are there roads internal to the, once they get into the map, are there roads we're opening?
No, it's a dead end.
Um, I would say that one was intended to be a road.
Yes.
Probably, but.
Remember, this whole Oakland Farms was a very problematic subdivision, because it's in a flood zone.
Joe's letters.
It's in a flood zone, and, and I think some of it is, Claire rated it the X, the very highest portion of the flood zone.
Yes, there's, it's a mistslash zone.
There are upland areas in those lots, which are outside of the flood zone, which has a build here.
They, yes, there would be.
Are the lots able, are the lots able to comply with the wetland setbacks, the wetland setbacks?
The, with the lots, for his design, the four lots, in the fifth lot, there is going to be a fifth, that is part of the old file map, you can't ignore it. If you're going to open an old file map, that has to be part of this. So.
Can they meet septic and all those?
That is.
May I?
Yes, it's up to you.
This map has been before the planning board as a finalization of an old file map. This is the Oakland Farms, all this inside the red, this little piece, this yellow on the bottom, that's Gazza land.
I don't, I, I know, Joe, we're not going to do it again. We're going to answer the question of whether it's unlisted or type two. That's the question today.
All right.
Yeah.
Five years ago, when I made this application to the board, it was designated by the board as type two. Okay, I have the resolution from the board.
And I want to read it to you. Okay, and it says, "The project involves only the designation of an existing mapped roads to be opened, and the designation of development and non-development boundaries based on the ownership pattern and size of existing mapped parcels, and therefore meets the criteria for classifications of type two action pursuant to six seventeen point five C seventeen of State Environmental Quality Review Act." Now, if you look at what that reads now, seventeen, it mentions no mention of roads. There is a section that talks about roads, but it says road openings, and then goes on to say that. So.
So this is not a road, I mean, basically, right? And it's an easement.
It's an easement.
Okay.
All right, Joe, you have, yeah, we have to break it four.
All right, I've got a couple of minutes. Claire asked me when we first got started on this, she said, where's your precedence for this? Where, you know, what are you, you're trying to do, get escape SECR? I said, well, I've escaped SECR.
Oh, no, it's not escape SECR, correct classification.
Correct classification of SECR, so I don't have to do an impact statement. She said, well, she said, you're, you're opening a road? The planning board said, because I don't have forty feet frontage on a road, that I have to go to zoning board to get a zero front yard, zero, a lot, front, uh.
Zero frontage.
Zero frontage. So I made the application to zoning board in December, okay? I had my hearing with zoning board a month ago. They got Claire's designation of possibly this being a.
Planning boards.
Planning boards that Claire prepared, and they said, well, we're not going to be able to decide on this till we resolve the SECR issue. And I said, I thought the SECR issue was resolved five years ago, when the planning board started with this map, and it designated it as type two, because I haven't changed the map in five years. I own the same amount of land, the same four lots. The change has been that initially, it was a five lot application, but as the board may remember, I had to give up one of the lots to get the thirty-foot access easement to come in, because I was landlocked, because the town, first the planning board almost landlocked me when they granted Oakland Farms, and they didn't leave me any access to get into my property. But then they said, no, the town opened up Kathy's Way, that's your access for your property. So I, they left me an opening. But then the town board and town, Community Preservation bought Kathy's Way, which landlocked me. So now I have six acres of landlocked land caused by the town, caused by first the planning board, then the town board. I bought my way in.
Let me just ask you a question. Do you know why the town bought that property?
They bought all these lots.
Do you know why?
Preservation, Community Preservation bought it.
The environmental sensitivity of this area is high on the charts, and if you look maybe at legislative intent, you'll see that, so.
Initially, it was designated for resort home, homesites on the town's nineteen seventy master plan.
And as Claire, Claire McCaslin, Blair McCaslin used to say, they're all going to be underwater.
Okay. Incidentally, just fourteen hundred feet to the east is the Strebbles Laundry, where they're proposing seventy-eight.
Oh, Joe, okay, stop, stop, stop. Focus on your application.
So your access was terminated.
Terminated, the town bought me out.
And so what did that leave you with?
It left me with, my application with the planning board stopped.
Correct.
Because I didn't have access. So I negotiated with the neighbor, gave him one of my lots, and he granted me a thirty-foot easement. Now, an easement is a lane. It's a road, but it's not a public road. And if you look at the code, they talk about easements, non-public roads being lanes. So I have access over a thirty-foot lane to get to my, my acreage.
Would you want to develop into four lots?
Yes, I, I only own the southerly portion, I had to give up one of the lots to get the access to get in. So I have five acres left, and that might make the application before the board for four lots on five acres. And the application has been inhabited pieces, because I have, I started with a grant of conservation easement on the most sensitive portion property of the property, of two acres. Then I'm offering an acre and a half of conservation easement, so I don't just get close to the wetlands. It's all been approved by town conservation, they went out, Lonnie Shea flagged it, and I can maintain the hundred and twenty-five foot separation, so I can be in compliance, I can get the hundred and fifty foot for the new AI system, and I got four building envelopes that I don't need any variances on, I can get a building permit on them. So I created, with the help of planners, a, a development plan with four lots, with all the required setbacks, I'm in complete compliance with the code, except I don't have frontage on the road. That's why I'm at Zoning Board of Appeals. Now, Claire brought up the fact that maybe this is something the planning board has never seen before, and I said, oh, wait a minute. I said, I had an application on Great Hill Road.
Those are two roads, Joe. That's a private road, and this is a old file map room.
Right, okay.
Coming from a road.
So I had an application with Ed Brody, when he was alive, on the south side of Great Hill Road. Came to the planning board, we said, we want to create lots, and the planning board said, where's your access? We said, well, we have a street on a, on a filed map, which is Hampton Avenue. I'm holding this correctly, yes. Board can see this, maybe this is better, this might be a little better. This is the road plan that was approved. Can you assist, please, just a thank you? These are the lots. The planning board said, we want access off the filed map street, but it goes into a private road, a lane.
No, private road.
It's a road.
It's a different.
The point is, it's a road.
It's a road.
And that's the point Claire is making, that your, your proposition is not a road.
Okay, this, I own it. I own Castle Hill Court. I obtained a deed from the owner of the property underneath Castle Hill Court Road Lane, whatever you'd like to call it, it's not a town road.
It makes a distinction.
It says private road on it. The surveyor is saying.
I'm telling you, I have a deed to it, I own it, okay? I own, and I gave an easement to these three lots, and the board approved it.
Joe.
You proved it based on the easement.
It says road, it just says.
I don't care if it says road, lane, it's an easement.
But that's the issue. That's the argument.
I don't know. I all have to say, if I'm being the conversation on my part, I've said the thing, I brought it kindly back, so he could give us some information that may say it was type two, I am open to it. I, give me the information that says it's a type two, I do not see it. SECR is very, you're on one list or you're on the other?
Why would, unless it.
It doesn't. It triggers an environmental review.
Just environmental, but not an impact.
Long form to start with and then see what happens.
The only difference between type two and unlisted is you got to do the long-form EAF.
I did. I met with Katie.
But type two, you can also, you can also do SECR. Remember, we did that in Bridge Hampton, on the corner lot, it was, it was type two, but we, because of all the impacts.
On a type two.
But he provided, he did provide EAF, because Katie, Gavin said, why don't you do that? Try this route to see if there's anything. So that is coming to you now. So this is a question, would you like, would you like to be lead agency on this application? That is the other question we can answer right now.
But is it a valid application? I mean, isn't that what we're looking at?
This is coming from the ZBA.
ZBA is coordinating with you now.
Right.
And other involved agency with the Health Departments.
Yeah, sure.
I've been to Health Department, they're ready to approve the map, subject to planning board approving. My reading of SECR.
You're going to need SECR.
My reading of SECR says that our actions that are once classified require further agency review? Right here. Once you've, you've already classified this as a type two, you're going back on your classification now?
It's just additional information received.
What? It's the same map, the same four lots, it's.
It's a mistake, Joe, we are allowed to make mistakes.
So you're saying that this resolution was, it was unanimously approved? Mrs. Chairman, you're, it was unanimously approved.
I'm saying it was a mistake.
I don't think the board makes mistakes, Claire, I think that.
What was the timeline? What was the classification?
It's five years ago.
And then, when did the town buy Kathy's Way?
Oh, before.
Oh, no, before.
Okay.
And when did you buy these properties?
Twelve, twelve and a half years ago.
Can you not take the development?
You owned these properties, the town buys Kathy's Way.
No.
No, the town, the town buys Kathy, Joe acquires the lots afterwards to consolidate into four lots.
So you knew the access had been cut off when you bought the properties?
When I bought the property.
Joe, he asked a question.
You knew the access had been cut off?
I knew that Kathy's Way had been cut off, but I knew that the planning board approved Oakland Farms all around me, under the code, you can't cut off a piece of the map and, and leave it hanging there, you have to provide for.
Well, what about your development? You have development rights, do you not?
I have plenty of development rights, especially in the, in the West Hampton Beach School District. I don't have many in the Southampton School District.
Can you use those? Can you transfer the development rights off those, that, those parcels?
I could transfer them, but I already have, I think, twelve development rights in the West Hampton Beach School District.
You want to bring the Pine Barrens' rights and put them on these lots?
I, I have Pine Barren credits.
Got all the rights for this.
In addition to town development rights.
You don't need credits to be transferred.
No, I don't need, I don't need any, these, these lots imply a zoning, it's one acre zoning, and I'm creating one acre lots. I don't need, oh, sorry.
Question for Claire, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, the issue at hand is that the access is over an easement, which is an easement, not a road, on your interpretation. Is there a legal mechanism for converting an easement into a recognized road?
No.
Not in this case, that's why he's the ZBA.
Okay.
Because it's.
The ZBA would be that mechanism.
There's no mechanism.
And it's not a driveway, doesn't meet the definition of a driveway. And it's not a driveway, doesn't meet the definition of a driveway.
It's just... It's just a right to convert.
There's something in there, remember. When I did the work on private roads, we did that big study. There was a whole discussion of the role of driveways versus...
So is that easement a driveway that is now has frontage? Is that what you're getting to?
Well, I'm wondering, is it defined or is it not, when it's accessing four lots? Is it... Can it meet the definition, and I don't know where this goes, of a driveway? Was it two eighty-seven or something is drive... Definition of driveways or something in there?
But he wants it for four lots.
Is it three lots or less, is that a driveway? I can't remember.
That could be a common driveway for four lots. I don't know.
The road, lane, driveway has been reviewed by the town engineer. Okay? And he's developed a road plan adequate for the lots, with eighteen-foot pavement, and is adequate, I've got the engineer's report, it was just done.
That doesn't mean it's...
It serves as an access for the four lots.
The road, you're constructing the road.
A common driveway.
He gave me... We're getting over this road, driveway.
If this is classified as a driveway, does that resolve anything?
Eighteen foot.
Still, it's still...
Well, that's the crux of it all.
It's a finish unlisted, and I just...
All right, we have... No time left.
Wayne's of counsel on this right now.
He's like, "No, thank you."
So we...
This is very highly likely to get...
Being amused.
Highly likely to get a good, a need, an impact saving, so why don't we just... We want to be lead agency or...
That's the question.
We want it.
Okay.
For sure.
Boy, you're gonna put me back into... Other than a type two, and it's already been designated as a type two. I don't think you can go backwards with the same facts.
You know, Joe, if you have any heart left, this is an area that should not be built on.
In response, I signed a contract thirteen months ago with Community Preservation to sell this land to them. They have not signed the contract, they are not proceeding with the purchase of my property. Okay, I've tried.
Keep pursuing it.
No.
Okay, no, hold on.
I'm seventy-five.
Hold on.
I started when I was sixty-three. Sixty-two.
Oh, my God.
I know.
Hang in, Joe.
Come on. You know?
Hang in. All right, let's... What's our action on this? Lead agency, are we taking an action on anything?
I'm... You're going to state that you would like lead agency in this manner.
Okay.
Yes.
Motion to accept by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Right.
Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor. We are lead agency.
Well, not yet.
Not yet.
You'll see what happens.
We'll see what happens.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Chris, a parting comment. If you could just look at these photos, and I want the board to just get an understanding of what I... I've been writing a couple of letters, but I haven't received any responses.
What is this?
This is where the neighbors were putting trash back there or something.
No, this is not, this is something entirely different. They own a building in West Hampton that destroyed by the wildfire. Okay? And the vegetation was right up next to the building. And I know that you're very concerned about clearing, protection of vegetation. I have an application before the Pine Barrens Commission now. They are receptive to an area around the buildings to be cleared of vegetation to a height of four inches above ground, for fire protection for the firefighters to get in.
Right.
That may conflict with your regulations, and I just want to...
All right, so, you know, the whole other...
Can I just ask you, what width, what width does the Pine Barrens consider it?
Ask Kathleen to come in.
Yes. May I ask that for a reason?
As long as it's non-fertilized vegetation, they want it...
Clear.
Four inch, no higher than four inches.
Yeah, but...
We're gonna get the recommendations, and we'll make adjustments.
Ground cover.
Yeah, we can do ground cover.
Yeah, ground cover, that's not... Doesn't require fertilization.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Joe, but no thanks for the SECRRA, but thanks for nothing.